This is the July 21, 2022, meeting of the Rockport Planning Board. We have a quorum with three members attending, Tom Mekes, Peter Cutton, and myself. Harry Corzlin said he would not be able to attend tonight, but we have a pretty short agenda anyway. So as we often, as we always start our meetings with a public comment period and end our meetings with a public comment period, that's what I'll do now. And we'll have public comment on anything relating to planning. It's the time for people to speak up. So we'll open the public comment period. Robert, if anybody has their hand up, you can unmute them and let them say what they want to say. Anybody with their hand up? Doesn't seem like it. Okay. Okay, well, the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes, which we don't have. I'm a little disappointed about that, but we were supposed to have the minutes through June. We don't have them and we're not going to have them in the immediate future, but we'll discuss that later. So we have no new minutes. We've approved all minutes that we have copies of, so we'll have to just move beyond that. All right, item three, discussion of special meeting for the fall to consider Article B provisions. This is moving along. It's, we have the possibility of either October 3 as a potential date for a special town meeting for this or sometime in November. You know, earlier in November. So that's, that's all I can get right now from, you know, Mitch. I did get a new typist to assist in kind of revising what we had. And she's done that and I gave everyone a copy of that. It's basically, I took out the tabs on the right. I didn't think they added anything and frankly, I thought they were a little confusing and very hard to kind of conform to a changing bylaw. So they're gone. We don't really need them. I don't even think we need, you know, a town, an approval from a town meeting to do them because they're kind of like numbering pages. They're not things that are changing the substance of any provision. But let, if you don't mind, let's just go through this again. If everyone has their copy out or can access it.
I have mine.
It's gonna take me a minute to get it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is this posted on our website or is this from your email?
Just from the email. This is, I mean, I'm not posting anything until, you know, we're all in agreement.
Paid at 7:19.
Yeah, it's pretty recent.
Oh, I was in Ohio, so I'll hold an excuse.
Well, the internet, I think, does travel there.
As did I.
So, well, look, I'm just gonna go through it and you can look at it later. But I think this is, unless there's some, you know, reason to change it, I think this will be the, you know, taking that, the old Article B and dividing it up into a bunch of new articles. And we already talked about this once before, but-
Did you say July 19?
Yeah, that's when it was sent out, everybody.
The title is edits with Articles 7, 19, 22.
Wow, I am not seeing it.
I think it was in a cluster of things you sent, wasn't it, Jason?
Um, well, let me just-
I forget.
Let me just take a look. Sent.
Looking at everything that Jason on the 19th, that's not there.
Maybe it was the next day and the title was just the 19th.
Yeah. Oh, you know, it wasn't from me. It was from Mary.
Oh, of course, that's right.
You know, that's why you're not, yeah, here it is, July 20. It's from Mary to the planning board. It was yesterday. And in hi all, Jason asked that I forward this to you, Mary. And then it's attached. You see?
Yeah, I got it.
See that? Okay. This will be the first time you've seen it.
I had seen the underlying thing. I don't know how much you changed.
Not much. I just, let me just go through it quickly.
Okay, 95 pages though. It's 95 pages.
Yeah, well, it's Article A is, this is all things that were included in Article B. At the last town meeting, this is now going to be where the next town meeting, we're going to have an Article A. And that's your purpose, basic requirement definitions. And that goes on. That's, and then what I've done is I've moved the, the dates of amendments, which were actually, you know, in the body of the text. Those have been moved to now footnotes at the end. So you can see footnote one says edited at annual town meeting 43, 2010. So all those footnotes are there, but they're just in a, all those indications are there or notes are there, but they're just at the end of the article. Okay?
So we, you want to talk about that now or later? Because that's, I think that's an issue.
Okay, let's talk about it now.
Okay, so the, the items that were in the existing bylaw draft or active bylaw only affects some of the recent changes. It doesn't affect, it doesn't note when older changes were in there. And likewise, it doesn't indicate where our new changes are in there. So to be consistent, you would need to add an end note for every single thing in here as to whether it was done recently or in the original version of our bylaw. So I see a very little point in having only a subset of the amended notes when you don't have more recent ones or older ones.
Well, this is just taking it from the, what's in the, in the amendment now. This is what, you know, these are from what's in Article B now. Okay?
Yeah.
And it's the things that, for example, in, on page 15, it has fall town meeting 917, 2018 was the last amendment to that particular item. It's under footnote seven. So it's not, this doesn't have anything to do with the new changes that we just adopted because these articles don't have anything to do with the new changes. These are other articles, so-
So, so when we publish these, how would someone know if it was a new change or something that was there before all the older changes?
When you say a new change, you mean when?
The things that we're changing with this current version.
Oh, well, then that has to be entered later. We don't, you know, as a footnote.
You can't distinguish what's just been changed with what was changed way a long time ago. That's my point. There-
Well, you can because I'm not, we're not changing the body of the bylaw. We're just moving the, the historical reference, references from the actual body of the bylaw to end notes at the end of the section. Nothing else is being changed.
So you are like on page 12 I'm looking at, there is about 15 things from 2010. So this does include the old, the old amendment dates, right?
Yeah, it does.
So there's a, so each of the, and you've done it at each of the ends of each of the articles, right?
That's correct.
What is the oldest amendment date shown?
04, 03, 10 is the oldest one I see right now.
Yeah, let me, let me just repeat. We haven't created any new information that was, that isn't in the bylaw now. This is the information from the bylaw as it now exists. So the only thing it wouldn't have, it doesn't have, Tom, is any potential changes that haven't been approved yet that may be approved in the fall of 2022. Everything else is there, just as it was before.
I maintain that there are changes before 2010 amendments that are not put noted and noted.
Okay, but that's the way it is now. It's no different. We're not, you know, I mean, it's the current bylaw. This is all from the current bylaw. So yeah, there may be changes from 2007. They're not in the current bylaw and they're not in the footnotes.
That's my point.
This, okay, good, but I'm not gonna, so what do you want to do? Go back and research it and add those two?
That would be what Toby would require.
Well, you know, look, no, I don't know what Toby's requiring, but Toby wanted to keep those dates in and they're in. They're just at the end.
And add new ones.
There are no new ones added yet.
You'd have to add new ones with whatever we-
If this passes, we add-
If the passes, we'll add new ones, you know?
Well, to me, to me, it's unnecessary and it's insufficient if it doesn't go back beyond 2010.
Okay, well, then it's insufficient as we speak. It's insufficient in the current bylaw.
Agreed.
It's the same.
It seems the spirit of the bylaw right now is it's, it's not perfect, but at least some of it's there. Moving forward-
I think it'll-
Let's just keep on, yeah, I understand your point, but I'm trying to like do this in a way that it, they'll be there if someone wants some, but they're not going to be in the body of the text. That's all. That is the only change. So-
That's an improvement.
The only other dating change I would suggest is when this is final, we actually put the date at the top of every page. So people know they're looking at the-
The one, the date of the what?
When this is, when the whole thing is approved, when this is the new-
Well, it'll be, I think it is right now.
Yeah.
It says 2019.
19 right now, yeah. So we just need to make sure we put a new one on.
Yeah, change that, yeah, right. Assuming they pass. Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Article B. Every article starts with the word language stricken lines are to be deleted. Language to be edited is underlined, just so each one says that. Article B is unconforming building uses. And that's it. That's its own article. Article C, Article C-
On page 16 now?
Yeah, now I'm on, yeah, well, that was on page 16, that's correct. Page 16 through 18, and I will call out the page numbers. Page 19 is where Article C would start, okay? That is establishment of districts, interpretation of the zoning. It goes on to permitted uses and zoning districts. And it has the, you know, the, the charts. And then one thing we are gonna have to move is, which I see it's still in here. It's got to be moved out, is accessory dwelling units. That's, that's out, but it's still in here. It's underlined. So that's, that needs to be removed because that was approved. Okay, so that's, comes out. So that's page, that would be right now, if you're looking at it, just to worry at you, pages 27 through 30. Okay, then, then we go to Article D. Area and dimension regulations. That's Article D. And then that has the schedule of area and dimensions. That's the, the tables with that. And it goes through that. And then we come to Article E, which is the parking requirements. That's a standalone article. And now we're on page 43. And that's Article F, which is the special regulations, kind of the miscellaneous regulations that don't really have a place to park otherwise. That includes housing balance, which we discussed before. And it also includes personal wireless service facilities. It includes marijuana establishments. And then we're done with that. And we go to Article G. This is your, one you've paid a lot of attention to, Tom, which is coastal floodplain district. And that's a standalone article also. And we go through that, and then we go to Article H.
Well, let me, let me get up the G part here.
Yeah, we're, okay. I know you've, you're, you have some thoughts about some changes to that, which we'll talk about in a minute, but that's-
Does this version include my suggested changes?
No, I haven't touched what you, what you, yes, it hasn't been touched yet.
Okay.
You know, it will be at some point.
You just sorted everything.
Just kind of like, right. This is sorting everything. I'm not making any, you know, language decisions or changes or anything. It's a matter of just breaking it up. So Article H is a large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations. I don't think we changed a whole lot in there, but I guess there were.
Needs a shorter name.
Shorter name, right? And then Article I, page 71, is the removal and fill in. And then Article J is the, is site plan review. There are a few changes there. And finally, Article K is administration and enforcement. That's the way that I suggested to break up these different articles. So they can all stand on their own. They're all discrete sections of the, of the bylaw. And it may be easier for people to digest when they're broken up in that way. So that's, you know, that's what, one of the things I've been working on with Cindy, the typist who's pretty good. But you know, if anybody has any strong feelings about this non-substantive stuff, this is, we haven't changed any language in anything from where it was before. You know, let's talk about it.
Will we be, is what we're gonna provide the stuff with the edits down the right? Or just-
Just underlines and deletions.
Okay, so all that stuff on the right and track changes, we can get rid of that.
Yeah, yeah, what I'm looking at, I mean, you may be looking at something different. I, I know you can kind of manipulate these, these drafts so you can eliminate certain things, like you can eliminate those comments.
Yeah, it just happened to open with that on.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, believe me, this is like, kind of, it's a pain in the neck because it's very hard to get it. So everyone's looking at exactly the same thing. But basically, all this is, Peter, is all we want to have here are the underlines and the, and the strikeout.
Yeah, I was only asking because it's, I think it's confusing otherwise.
Yeah. The more extraneous information we have, the more confusing.
Yeah, we have an enormous number of things where we corrected the spelling of bylaw by making L lower case.
I know.
And we replaced spelled out numbers with actual numbers. And so that's the majority of all those comments.
Yeah, I mean, that's right. I mean, most of this stuff is like, it's like a no brainer.
You can control the way this appears by issuing it as a PDF, not as a Word document.
Well, yeah, eventually we'll do that. But right, I didn't want to, you know, do that yet. But you're right. And maybe the next time we'll do that.
Yeah, it'll be nice. Once it's a PDF, we can put bookmarks in for the different, you know, articles and whatever, make it easier to use.
Yeah.
I realize right now you gotta keep it as Word.
Yeah. So anyway, that's where we are.
So is I the last one? What was the last one?
Okay. Administration and enforcement.
So 11 articles.
You'll have some end notes, but that's not in an article, right? There's no article for the end note section, right? That's just- What you were calling footnotes that are actually end notes.
You're not, there are no separate articles.
Right, so that's just administrative tech on the end.
Yeah. So you put them at the end of each article.
Some of these things, I think, we'll be able to go through really quickly at town meeting because as you said, Peter, they're just, you know, minor stylistic changes. I, it's just, you know, no one's gonna have an issue with them. Others may, may require some more discussion.
The one thing we might have to do is there's a couple of places we deleted things. So they don't show up in your convention of underlining, or no, they show up in your cross through.
The cross out.
Yeah, across.
It could be deleted. It should be, show up as deleted.
Okay.
Okay. Now, in terms of your, I, Tom did some proposed edits for the coastal floodplain provision. And I think we, that deserves discussion, you know, among the entire board at, you know, one of our meetings. We haven't really done that and we need to do that because we, you know, that's a real substantive matter we need to discuss. So my thought was, next, at the next meeting, which is April 4, I mean, August 4, I'm sorry, I will not be in attendance. That means assuming Harry's here, assuming everyone's here, everyone else is, you're only gonna have three people. We only have four people, but then you only have three. So if we want to discuss your proposed changes, Tom, maybe we should do that at the following meeting, which would be the, which would be two weeks later on the 18th.
Okay.
And what we'll do is circulate your draft before that meeting. Everyone ostensibly will read it and we'll have a discussion on the 18th. Then we'll really, you know, kind of get right through it and decide what we want to, you know, what we as a board want to include, what we don't. And then the next thing's gonna be, you know, we're gonna be going to public hearings on these things all over again. So, which we have to, okay?
I didn't realize we were so tight, but my, I have to be gone August 4th as well.
Okay, well, then that's, that could be a problem. I mean, do we just won't have a meeting?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah, my sister-in-law passed away and I'm the executor, so I have to go to Naples, Florida in August.
Oh, yeah. Well, you, you want to have any crowds.
That's true.
Sorry to hear that. Okay, so let's just keep it on the 18th and let's make sure we make really good use of that time because, you know, we want to go to, we want to, you know, noticing the public hearings is, it's a big deal. And especially if we're gonna be October 3, we need to get moving, you know?
Well, actually, now that you remind me, you mentioned this is an internet. I probably, I could just get on from Florida if you feel there's a huge need for that meeting.
Well, you know, let's see what happens, okay? Right now, we don't have an agenda. Something may come up which might need you to be on. But if not, I think it would be better for us to wait till the 18th to talk about this. You know, we may get an ANR in next week. Well, then you gotta be there, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
But let's see what happens. Okay. That's all I have on that. No, and if everyone's come-
Looks great.
Thank you. All right, the next item is member, member items. And actually, Robert Craig, who's our, who's our host today, I need to talk with you about something. Are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you sent an email a few days ago. It's not on the agenda, but just want to find out generally what, and we'll put it on the agenda, but it, it's regarding a project that is in a flood, in a floodplain. You have received a request below from FEMA for the repairs completed at T war from Bradley Warf as a result of damage from the March 2018 storm. Work was completed in the summer of 2021. And it says here, please provide documentation from the local floodplain administrator stating that the project that described is in compliance with Section Roman numeral nine of the Town of Rockport zoning laws.
Yes.
We're not, far as I know, we're not the local floodplain administrators.
Okay.
Why do you, this is a, I, I wasn't aware that we had jurisdiction over this.
Yeah, so the reason why I reached out to you specifically is because based on FEMA's interpretation, it seemed that you were. However, if there's another board that I should be going to with that question, then I can bring that to them instead.
Well, conservation can.
Yeah, but they're not here. They don't exist right now.
Building inspector.
That's who I thought it should go to. Have you talked with him, Bob?
Uh, no, I haven't talked to Paul about it. I certainly can't.
Yeah, let, let us know because this isn't the kind of thing we usually do.
Okay.
You know, about specific construction projects and to say whether they're, you know, the work was in compliance with the Section 10 of the bylaws.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So let, you know, let us, let me know if that's, if that works.
Yeah, yeah, I'll reach out to Paul in the morning, let him know of the situation and see what his thoughts are.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other member items?
Well, I have a couple of things. From the Ad hoc Water Committee. They have a subcommittee working on a map for the watershed protection overlay district and associated wording that goes with that. And this would be part of the bylaw changes that we're going to special meeting, as I understand it. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct. The, you know, I did a draft of the water supply overlay protection district. I parted down, I made it simpler, made it more understandable. Eric Hutchins, you know, said that, oh, well, he has this stuff he needs, he wants to do with it. You know, and since he was really heavily involved with it earlier, I deferred to him. with it, you know, and since he was really heavily involved with it earlier, I deferred to him. And, you know, guess what? I haven't heard back. So, and now we have another entity that's doing this very same thing?
No, Eric is on the, on the ad hoc water committee.
Okay, good. Well, that's good. He's aware of it, you know, obviously, yeah.
Okay, so if that's going to go into the special meeting, then they're interested in knowing what the timetable is for completing their work.
Yeah, I already told Eric that, um, and he seemed, he didn't seem like they could do it in time. I, I sent him an email and I said, so I can actually, let me just see if I can find it.
But it would depend on when the special meeting is, if it's October third.
Well, yeah, that, first time I heard for the, um, about the meeting in, in November was like today.
Okay.
I have a, um, yeah, here's an email from him. Um, hello, Eric, how are you, how are your revisions going? We want to present this to the voters at a special meeting this fall. And that I got a, you know, fairly lengthy email from him in response. I am working on it and, you know, he's working on it. But it will take a few steps, including discussions with the plant DPW and back to the planning board to help ensure that everyone is on the same page. And then, um, I got another message from him. Let's see. He writes me, he's going to be out of the country between October ninth and October twenty second. He said, next step is for me to work on the proposed language and map changes which can be presented and discussed at a, it's a typo here, at a meeting, maybe late July, question mark. That was late, in the end of June. So this is our last meeting in July and I haven't heard from Eric.
Well, they're beavering away on it, as, as they say, and, uh,
They're what?
They're, they're working on it very hard. We call it beavering.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, maybe that's an MIT term or maybe that's a Dutch term. I can't remember.
Well, it sounds like beavers, the way they work, you know?
Yes, they're the engineers of the animal world.
Busy beavers, yeah.
In any case, they, they are wanting to know the timeline so they can back calculate whether they could do, get into the warrant and if there have to be hearings before that and.
Well, sure, they're going to have to be hearings.
So.
And a timeline right now, I would say, unless I hear otherwise, I'm looking at October three.
Okay.
How long? When would the public hearings have to be?
Uh, at least twenty-one days before the, um,
So September, end of August.
Yeah.
October three doesn't work.
No, wait a second.
That would be in September if it's three weeks before the October.
Yeah, that would be September.
First week in September, we'd have the public hearing.
We can have the public hearings any, you know, as long as notices out. I mean, there's nothing, far as I'm concerned. Yeah.
And what about the warrant?
That's.
Is that also twenty, that's only one day, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, I, you know, uh, let me, let me see if I can pin this down because I think you're right. I mean, I think, um, I, I have to actually backtrack, you know, start with the day of the town meeting and go backwards. And, uh, I got to nail this down like sooner than later.
Okay.
It would be tough, it would be tough to make a October three meeting. I think November for us would be way easier. Now, I'm going to talk with Mitch about that tomorrow and just say. Yeah.
Maybe stuck with a public hearing around during Labor Day weekend.
Yeah, that wouldn't be good. Yeah.
Yeah, so we need this information for our own purposes, not just for what they're doing on the overlay.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
That's that item. Another item, a little personal. Um, you may have heard this selectman have a new policy that someone can only be on three public bodies and that includes elected positions appointed by board of selectmen and appointed by town moderator. Only three. And so I was in the position of being on four, including the planning board. And so in order to remain as chair of the Green Community Task Force, one of my options was to resign from the planning board. I chose not to do that. And for example, if I had done that, we wouldn't have been able to meet today. We wouldn't have a court.
Yeah, well, that would be great.
So my point is, I think their policy is exerting undue influence on an elected position. And whether or not you agree with that, those are my feelings.
Oh, interesting point, yeah.
Yeah, why would, why would they include, include an elected position in that? That's, it's a, it's a different animal, right?
It is. Well, it, it's also different to be a position appointed by the town moderator. Those are direct from town meeting. And not under the influence of the selectman, although it's a little less differentiated than an elected position. So I'm, I'm just expressing my concern that, um, you know, heads up, this could be you.
So what, what board, what are you on, Tom, right as of now?
Uh, well, planning board is the elected, the appointed by town moderators, the ad hoc water that I just talked about. We've got some interesting cross pollination there. And the two appointed by the board of selectmen are rights of way in which my term does not expire until next year or year after. It didn't expire this year. And the ad hoc water committee, I'm sorry, and the, um, Green Community Task Force, which is an annual position. So the one that was within their grasp immediately was not to reappoint me to Green Community Task Force. And so that's what they did Tuesday.
Hmm. Well.
I had the option, I had the option to resign from three other things, one of which I think was inappropriate, at least one.
Yeah, well, that would have been like really difficult. So, okay.
If you disagree with their policy, that it's including the elected positions, perhaps you could express that opinion to the selectman.
Yeah, let me think about that and how how we want to look at that.
Well, let me give you a hypothetical example.
No, I, I mean, I know, I, I understand what you're saying and I'm, I'm, I'm a little troubled by the fact that you, you in this position are elected by the voters of the town of Rockport.
Indeed.
And they're telling you that you, because of the number of, you know, I could see if it had to do with their uh, appointments, they could limit, well, they would have the power to limit their appointments.
Yes.
But to say then that you've got to limit, you know, without, without a conflict being involved, that you've got to look, basically resign from an elected position to hold in a, you know, to continue to hold in a position by their board, hmm.
At an extreme, they could appoint you to something to force you off an elected committee.
Force me on, huh?
Force you off.
Peter's saying they could force me on or get me off of something else.
Yeah.
Well, my, my extreme example was going to be, let's say, a person is, uh, appointed to three things by town moderator and zero things by the board of selectmen. In that case, you would not be allowed to run for planning board.
Yeah.
That's the reductio ad absurdum.
How, how new, how new a policy is this?
They passed it last year and made it effective this year. So it just hit me.
You know what? I, I, I'm thinking out loud here, but I wonder if they need a bylaw for that.
A general bylaw?
Well, when it comes to telling an elected official that they had to, um, that one of their options is to resign from an elected position, I would think you might need a bylaw for that. You can't, you know, they can't, anyway, I'll think about that.
Right. You would think the only thing they could do is, is write regulations about their own.
Precisely. They can, they can regulate their own appointments and minimize their own appointments and limit their own appointments. But I don't think by, unless it's by a general bylaw, they can affect the an office of an elected official. That's just my thinking.
I agree.
You know?
Thanks for thinking.
The thing that happens in Congress between an agency issuing regulations and then Congress, you know, making laws that there's, there's a line there where an agency can't tread on legislative authority. And it's like, this to me seems like that. So I'll, I'll look into that. But anyway, thank you for letting us know. That's an important question.
Okay, thanks. That's all I got.
Okay. Anybody else for member items?
I, I went to, uh, we had the community preservation committee uh, Tuesday. It turns out we have to have an annual information, uh, public hearing, public discussion, sort of freewheeling, which they hadn't done in the past. They tended to try to use a little planning at the fall meeting. Um, but so this was described as a kind of, just to get some ideas on the table. We had the same quorum from the planning board there. Tom was there, Denise was there and I was there.
Yeah.
We had a, we had a threesome there. Um, and we, we did it in two parts. One was the public hearing, fair number of people. I think one person was quite vocal on upping the ADA um, requirements for projects associated with uh, projects that are funded by the CPC, although he was probably at the wrong meeting for um, general approach to the kind of regulations we have in ADA in general. And I think Phil tried to lead him in the right directions a little bit, but he was very determined. He was a good advocate for, for ADA. There was, um, uh, Toby suggested that the meeting should be in the evening for better public access from the three in the afternoon. So um, there was no movement on that, but it was on the floor. Uh, then we, um, oh, and, and, uh, Rob, was it Jim Gardner that spoke to the DPW?
Yes.
Yeah, so he, he actually had a kind of a loaded question or a loaded issue that I think they'll have to talk about in time with, which is kind of a continuum of what historic preservation means in terms of funding it. The amount of work that they have and the amount of work they can do. Are we talking about historic preservation for a building that's actually historic? Or for, um, a bill that's owned by the town, or are we also drifting into historic buildings that are owned by private individuals or private groups? Or are we drifting into buildings that aren't necessarily themselves historic, but they're in the historic district and things done wrong would affect the whole historic district? And so it's something that needs to be pinned down. And I think in our, you know, planning interest that, that, uh, you know, we'll have some say in the, some say.
Yeah.
And I think because the old firehouse is up there, the old firehouse has had several changes over the years. And so at this point in time, it's still up in the air. It asked for four hundred thousand, we tentatively approved it, uh, then, but it was going to cost far more than that to bring it up to, um, the FEMA requirements. So they were looking for a, uh, variance based on, uh, it's historic meaning. We have one letter from someone saying it's not historic. We now have another letter saying it's, it is and it's in the historic district. So we're going back and forth on it.
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, I, I'm involved with this because my wife is one of the people who's on the building study committee and she's been involved with this. I think the latest was that a letter actually came in after, the day after your meeting from someone.
Yesterday.
Yeah, one of the high-ups at the Mass Historic, you know, the agency that regulates this, who did indeed say what seemed to be obvious that it is an historic building, it is in an historic, recognized historic district. And I guess there was a little confusion about that before that they were saying that it had to be listed on the national register, which is, you know.
The no letter was this, was just as legally specific as the yes letter. So I guess that was, I mean, we, everybody threw up their arms with the last letter.
Yeah. The last letter meaning the one yesterday?
Someone said, no, the one that said no.
Yeah, that was weird.
Yeah, he was very specific about why he said no, though.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Okay. Well, um, you, uh, for that, I'm very familiar with it. Uh, any other, oh, by the way, uh, Peter, just, you're now going to be retired. Is that what I'm?
Yes, as of August first.
Hey, well, congratulations.
I can dig into that turning article B, man.
Yeah, good. All right, um, public comments. Um, Robert, I think, uh, it's time for, if anybody wants to comment from the public.
Yeah, you have a hand from, uh, Toby.
Okay.
Toby, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Uh, Toby, Osenean ninety-five Granite Street. Uh, the discussion with Robert Craig about, uh, uh, repairs to town buildings and how that, uh, ties in with the FEMA regulations. Uh, Tom Mekus is correct, it is indeed the building inspector. And if you look in the coastal floodplain section of the zoning, it says he reports uh, on construction in the floodplains, uh, annually to the, uh, FEMA authorities. Um, whether that actually happens or not, I don't know. Uh, that would be one aspect of checking into the article on the coastal floodplain. Uh, I would very much appreciate having, uh, Tom's proposed revisions. If you would tell Mary, the secretary, uh, I could pick them up. As I said before, I think it's, uh, a long way past, um, tinkering and fixing. It needs to be, uh, it calls out for Dr. Karoakian and, uh, a new reincarnation. Uh, it's way past, you know, tinkering and fixing that section. Uh, as the Old Firehouse Trust, um, something that was missing from, uh, Monica's presentation to the board of selectmen. Um, the fact that, uh, they won't get the waiver, uh, to construct it, um, you know, in a floodplain, um, the waiver that would allow them to construct it without meeting the standards for, uh, building in a floodplain. Uh, if we actually all believe that, uh, climate change is real and the water is rising and that coastal buildings are vulnerable. Um, if we're asking for waivers, we're just scamming the system because the hazards are out there with or without the waivers. And I would think that whoever it is that ensures the town of Rockport would not be so dumb and blind as to check such things out. So it would be an additional and considerable, uh, expense ongoing if you were allowed to, uh, reconstruct the building on the basis of it being historic without meeting the, uh, the stipulations for building in a flood zone. Um, and as for the article B, it seems you're headed in the right direction. I'm still not sure whether you're lumping together some of the, uh, Roman numeral sections. Um, if you're doing that and there are substantive changes, not, not, um, not bureaucratic ones, uh, I would ask you to reconsider because I think we need a separate vote on each Roman numeral section. And that indeed is what the, uh, government and bylaw committee is planning to do with their presentation at the fall town meeting. I ask you to consider that.
Well, right now we have A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K.
Eleven.
Eleven different articles. I think that's enough.
Well, uh, I would say that, um, any article is capable of division on, uh, the, the, uh, the say-so of the moderator and also, uh, uh, any ten citizens can ask for an article uh, to be divided. And my feeling was if there are substantive changes, there needs to be a separate vote on each one. Whether, uh, the, the number of articles, uh, is actually irrelevant. If you think of the presentation uh, every fall for the, uh, the community preservation committee, that is one article with five motions or twelve motions, one for each project. And that would be an alternative model, model for your presentation. Would you please consider that?
Yeah, I think we want to do it, uh, this way, uh, Toby, because you know, these articles are, are essentially standalone. And they can be broken. And they can be broken up. And the others can be approved. Eleven. I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to divide it up into, you know, 20 different votes. It's unnecessary. Many of the changes that are in these articles are really changing a capital B, a small b to a capital B, things like that. It's just not going to be an issue. So let's see how it goes. I mean, we still have a little ways to go, but that's kind of my thinking at this point.
And don't please forget to tell Mary that I'm to have a copy of Tom's revisions because she's
I'm not gonna tell Mary that until the board looks at. No, I mean, that, we're, there's a, there's a time for that, Toby. Not quite yet. You know.
It hasn't been sent to the board yet.
Look at them first. And then, and then there'll be public hearing on, you know, and you'll certainly have a copy by then. Okay, that's the way it works. So okay. Anybody else have a comment?
I had an inquiry that I, I'm sorry, I didn't read the whole email. Somebody was wondering about the Gulf Coast.
Yeah, no, that's I, I'm gonna have to straighten that out with Bob Visnick and the building inspector, you know, they, they apparently went there and improved. One of the adjoining lot owner would originally ask for us to determine the status of the road, whether it was passable. They withdrew that application. They just went in and they improved it. So it's done. So the question is, and I, I, I gotta look into this, whether that, whether we still need to pass on the, on the passability of this road. There already is a lot, the lot is already there. And the road has already been improved. So like, I mean, I didn't know we were engineers, you know, to look at all these things rather than, and I'd like to have the building inspector take a look at it first.
Isn't that what started this cycle? The building inspector asked us to look at it first? And we said it clearly wasn't adequate.
Well, we didn't, we, we never said that officially, but it, it looked like it was going to be a problem. And then they withdrew the application. So now they've improved it. So you know, I want to hear what the building inspector has to say.
I'm surprised you're allowed to build a road without a permit. But this isn't like
Well, welcome to Rockport, you know. So
Well, if the, the way wasn't adequate before and they've, they say they've made it adequate, somebody has to make that determination. If it's not the building inspector, it's us.
Yeah, but, but I, it wasn't adequate mainly because it was like you know, there were trees in the middle of it. So but I would like the building inspector to take a look at it because at the end of the day, he's going to be issuing the building permit. Assuming one's being issued for a construction on this lot.
Yeah.
See, you know, usually, usually these this, we're kind of digressing here, but usually these requests for suitability come up because someone wants to create a lot. They don't have a lot there. They want to create it. And they want to know whether the road is sufficient for pass, is passable. So then they can create a lot that, you know, is adjacent to the road. But this lots, there's no issue about this lot. This lot is there. It's been there for years. So basically, we're looking at the road and saying, is this road passable or not? You know, we'll get to it. We can't, it's not on the agenda for tonight. I don't want to
Okay.
Add it further.
I, I mentioned it because one of the voters was on, on, on their meeting earlier and she's dropped off.
Yeah, well, that's okay, but we're not talking about it tonight. It'll be on the agenda for the next, you know, meeting.
Thanks.
Okay. All right. That's that's all I, that's all we have, I guess. Motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Peter, seconded by Tom. All in favor, Peter?
I am.
Tom?
I.
I'll vote in favor. Motion, a meeting adjourned at 7:25. Good seeing everybody and we'll be at the meeting, you know, the next meeting on August 4, but whatever is gonna happen, Tom, you'll be presiding for that meeting.
Okay, if there's a meeting, I will preside.
You will be as the chair, as the vice chairman, yep.
And then we'll do the amendments on the 18.
Yes.
Coastal.
And I, and I'll find out more about, you know, this November day because the more we talk about it, the more I realize you know, we're just not gonna make it for October 3. Okay, great. Talk to everybody. Robert, thank you.
Take care. Thanks.
Have a great night, everybody.
Good night.
Bye, everybody.